2:30? We'll reach you right now. All right, we'll start the meeting with the pledge of the flag. Pledge of the flag, United States of America and to the other four which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody, to the November 2nd, 2023 Village Board Meeting. We'll start the activity with approval of the Village Board meeting minutes from October 19th, 2023 meeting. I get motion?
Move.
Any changes, discussion, questions? Hall of favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Citizens comments? Anybody wishing to address the board, come to the microphone, give us your name, address, and what's on your mind? Big man, okay.
Want the light right off the back?
Hi, I'm Monique. I'm resident on Locke Street, and I just want to talk about the development and the lack of maintaining the property that they cleared, and how long it's taking, and the progress being done, and not getting any help to, you know, have that land that they cleared maintained. So that's what I wanted to complain about.
Okay.
So, I don't know. Is the new head, is the new code enforcement officer here?
No, he's not here.
So he told us that, you know, it's supposed to be looked at like farmland, therefore we don't tell farmers to mow their property, so we have no say in having Upreach maintain their property. They don't have to adhere to the same codes of 10 inches or 12 inches, whatever it is that residential students, that meant for public use. By my house across the street, for farmland, it's not zoned as farmland, so why do I have to look at it like it's farmland? They haven't held up their end of the bargain, they've dragged this project on, they, I feel like they tell you what they, what you need to hear so they can get things approved that they want to get approved. We were told a couple of months ago that the townhomes are going to start three months, but we're two weeks away from that start date, and they're not anywhere close to starting the townhomes. They were supposed to have been started right after the apartments, and it was all supposed to have been done three years ago. So, I live across the street from what looks like a dump, the fire hydrants are buried, you know, it's just, it's an eyesore. And when we reach out to codes and they don't even, you know, his response to us is common sense should prevail, and I think he CC'd you on that email. That's an insult. You know, you work for us, you know, just at least say, let me talk to them, I'll see what I can do, but I shouldn't have to look at that year after year. Last year, they mowed for the first time in November, you know, it's just, it's insane.
Well, they, they mowed it a couple times, I know that.
That's because we've posted signs and we, we, you know, had a hoopla. If we hadn't said anything or done anything because the village didn't want to help us, they wouldn't have done it. It wasn't until it was on social media and, you know, all the, all that happened.
It is one of those rules that maybe doesn't work as well there as in a lot of places, but if you drive over on Canton Street, for instance, there's properties that have a lawn around their house, but behind their house is fields, and we don't make them mow that because it's not considered, it's undevelopable, undevelopable land. That's, gets defined as the same thing on Locke Street. Now, what we can do, and what I thought we were in the process of doing was, Elmarichi has been pretty good responding when somebody has called to tell them that the neighbors are upset and they'd like to get that cut back, especially around the fire hydrant in that area, and they've come in and done that. We may, we need to be more diligent as far as dealing with them and getting them the word that, hey, it's getting too tall, it needs to be cut. Call it farmland, call it undevelopable, whatever, but it's right across the street from people's houses. One of the things that was supposed to happen is some of that land would get cleared, people on the other side of Locke Street would be able to see the river. Because of that, it would be a nice benefit. Obviously, when that stuff gets too tall, you don't see the river. And obviously, it isn't going to be much of an issue now because of the weather and the time of the year, but I, I understand your concerns, and I think we just need to be harder working as far as getting Elmarichi's people to get over and get it done.
They just get on a schedule and they just maintain their land that they should have had developed three years ago. You know, they make comments like, one of the meetings, he was, you know, he was a good neighbor to the village, and they do their best to do, you know, the right thing. This is when they're asking to have the land separated, you know, the tax parcels, whatever it was, whatever he was, that request was, but he's, you know, telling us, saying all this, it's like, really, you're a good neighbor, this is your land and your, that's not being a good neighbor.
No, you're right.
You know, they tell us they're getting the townhouses built, well, it's two weeks now, are they going to get started in two weeks? I mean, let's be, and he's saying that also because, and the next breath, he wants something. He wants the path taken away because he didn't disclose it to the homeowners, because he didn't go to the planning board to let them know that he was building a house. I mean, come on. So the village bends over backwards, I don't think it's crazy for the village to say, listen, you help, we help you out, you help us out, you know, maintain this land, you can drag your project on as long as you want. The houses were supposed to be the last part of the entire project, so we skipped the whole middle. I, I, it's like, we make all these plans and yet there's no, nobody adheres to them. It's just...
Yeah, I, I think the economy...
And it's by little request, just maintain their land, that's it, just clear it, or, you know, mow it once a month, once every six weeks, we'd be happy.
And I don't think you're asking for too much.
Yeah.
So, we will, I will talk to our codes guy, you know, it's a little late now because the grass isn't going to be growing much longer, but, you know, because of the time of the year, but they could still go down and clean it out once before winter.
Back in the spring, I mean, I, we'll be back, there's...
Hopefully it won't happen.
I know, yeah, it's, I hope I don't, but I can't not say anything anymore, so...
That trial going to Tabor Street needs to be getting done soon, so that's, that's one of the things on our agenda, so...
Chuck, hasn't, hasn't he gotten notice before, some moment?
Well, what Dick is saying is right, is the zoning in there, we couldn't make him mow some of that lawn out there. And, and Monique's talked a few bunch of times about it, and then our hands are kind of tied there, and the whole process got slowed down during COVID and everything else. The good news is now, as you're moving along and they're changing some of the zoning there and some of the lots, then we have control, now we have, we have more control over, over what they do there. But she's right, it was neglected, and I did get after them a couple of times, and they did come down, but hopefully they're going to get in and build that out and, and be done with it. I think once they start, well, once they start and the zoning changes, and the codes guy can go in, but he didn't have the authority with the open lots, I mean, you just couldn't do it.
But Greg would get them to do the first 18 feet.
Correct.
And then I was even mad that that's all they would do, because I'm like, well, you cleared the whole thing, but at least that was something, but then they stopped doing that when Greg left.
And then, well, when I talked to them beginning of the year, I said, you gotta do the whole thing. So they did the whole thing, then it grew back up, then they did it a second time, and hopefully that, like I say, once they get building these houses, they're, I think they're going to go quickly, and then, we have more control, once the lots are established, then we have control of that, and the codes guy can go in there and do that. But to Dick's, similar, when you go alongside of Canton Street, that whole area was, it's zoned the same way, and we, the grass grows out, it's our own, and we don't have any say. So, and you have a good complaint, because it does look, I don't know, far from there.
And I feel like the village has been very accommodating with that entire project for them, so I feel like it's not too much to say, listen, just please, I don't want to hear it from these people anymore. She comes in every week now, because I will, and we should just mow the grass, that's it.
Doing noted, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
And we're very sorry that you've had to go through that.
When there's only changes that we have more power...
Anybody else? Mr. Monk, are you here to see us?
More gets on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board. Here for the 2024 Beeville Big Chill, on behalf of the Grand Valmont Chamber of Commerce. So we're looking for approval of usage of Mercer Park for the date of Saturday, January 27th. Same event it has been for the last 16 years. Go, the event itself will go from noon to about 3:00, people plunging into the river, a small food event as part of it, and the pub crawl afterwards, so. Looking to secure the date. In general, we get an open container waiver, and I believe we generally waive the park usage fee, but then charge the bathroom cost, whatever that ends up being. I did send some paperwork over to Jody earlier today, I have one more document I have to get to her tomorrow, so.
Very, it's that time of year.
Yeah, I came in...
Sure been thinking about it.
Yeah, so, nothing's changed from the typical event, same everything really, so, just look, get the day secured so we can start planning.
Is that something we should act on tonight, or we wait till all paperwork is in?
He only has to get his one notary paperwork, but I have the insurance that I just have to send to Dan tomorrow, and then I have the application.
The, the form I need is the alcohol and identification is the only one I have to get, I have to get that notarized.
That's something that we want to wait till next meeting, when we have all that stuff?
We have, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Would you like me to come back, or can you guys just arrange that?
Well, anybody can ask you questions now, I mean, if anybody's got a question, then that'll take care of that, that's usually why we like people here, paying waiver of alcohol and that kind of stuff.
Where's the open container waiver for? At Mercer Park?
At Mercer Park, yeah, yeah, because there's WT Bruce serves there, yeah.
Okay.
In the tent, in the tent where they have the food tasting...
Right, right.
After they go in the water? Yeah, that's something I'll be...
Or the spectators who are crazy and...
That might be the only reason some of them go in the water.
And then that, also the fees for the park, right? Is that what you're asking for?
Correct, yeah, whatever, the $50, and then last year, we started paying the, whatever the cost ends up being for the bathroom.
All right, so that's, that's an impact fee. Chuck, you had expressed a concern that in the, for the past 15 years, you've driven a piece of equipment into the river, and that as a superintendent, the union may not allow you to do that anymore.
All right, that's, I always broke, when I was foreign, I always broke the ice. I went down and I never, I never asked to get paid for it, nor did I get paid for it, but as superintendent, I can't do that, and, because what that's doing is taking, it's taking, they may not complain, but it's taking time away from, it's overtime for the union. So there may be, it, this year was fantastic, we didn't have to do that.
Yeah, that's been a few years of...
Yeah, awesome, great, yeah, but if, if it does come to that, then there is a, it may not be much, but it's, we're going to have to pay someone to do that, because we can't, I can't do that, so that might...
Is that something we can just kind of talk about, or is...
Oh, you're fully like, who, who we could have do that? Yeah, we have rates for our equipment and the operators, and, and they're really not that much, and it usually doesn't take that long down there, but, yeah, we have to, that's a good point, I forgot about that.
Depending on the year, yeah, it's like the same, same issue, the bathroom, the colder it is, the harder that stuff is, so...
Yeah, yeah, I just, I can't do it anymore. I, I did it for years, and it was, you know, it's just, it's a great, it's a great function, and, but it might cause...
So Chuck, maybe if you can get him those rates, just so they have an idea of something, if you do end up needing it, you would know what it might cost.
It's great if they don't have to push the ice off.
Yeah, that would make sense, yeah.
Because if you don't have to, it's just so much easier.
Yeah.
Okay, if you remind us before the next meeting, just, you know, say something, Jody, to put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Jody will remember, she wrote it down, I saw her.
I said, I know, Chuck, I...
Well, I mean, no, if you can text Jody at least, he, he knows if he needs anything else before that meeting, paperwork, so...
Okay, I'll get the, I'll get the other form in tomorrow, too, so...
Sounds good.
We'll be all set.
Very good.
All right, thank you, everyone, and I'd just like to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your service to the village.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure getting to know you personally and professionally, and I wish you well, so thank you for your time.
Have you, sir.
Have a good night, thank you.
Anybody else? One way. We're in trouble now.
I know, very short and sweet. On a personal note, I want to wish you the very best in this, this new journey of yours, and thank you for taking the helm for so long, it's been a great journey, a great run, and I hope for the, the future brings health and happiness for you and Linda and the rest of our family. Thank you.
Thanks, girl. She's prejudiced.
Pays well, too.
It's funny, because when we were younger, we didn't get along so well. We were cat and, cat and dogs going at each other. Anybody else wish to address the board? All right, we'll move on to trustee comments, we'll start with Megan.
I'd like to add an agenda item, a motion to request an additional 20 hours for Louise Corrigan to work with the DPW clerk on this year's budget at her rate of $20.42 an hour.
Okay, that'd be item G.
I'll stick to the agenda.
All right, Eric?
I'd like to add an agenda item to add, accept the access easement on the future section as shown on Vogus Island, section number one, dated 7/1/2023, that was modified on October 20th, 2023. And that's referencing the Locke Street addition to the state land there, so we have access to it, because we were kind of name blocked there, as part of that agreement to give up the pathway, they agreed to give us that land, so we have that in the space.
All right, that's item H.
And I'll stick to the agenda besides that.
Dean?
I have nothing to add to the agenda, so I'll just stick to the current one.
Okay, thank you. Ruth?
I'd like to add another item to the agenda, a motion to appoint the following as a temporary Canton Woods maintenance worker with an effective date of November 6th, 2023, and that's Patrick Lamran at $20 per hour.
Okay, that'd be item I.
And that's it.
Okay, shut up. Agenda. Bruce?
I'd like to amend Eric's motion.
Okay.
To add to the end of it, pending engineer and attorney approval.
Oh, okay.
Just, just for kicks. Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Engineering or attorney?
Oh, oh, make sure this thing gets done as promised.
Okay, very good. Anything else?
No, I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay. Got a few things, just remind people that Saturday, November 4th, is the CMY Veterans Parade and Expo at the fairgrounds. At 9:00, the Walzville Community Band will be playing. At noon is the parade around the fairgrounds, and there's other stuff going on, they have breakfast, there's plenty of displays for veterans, that's a very nice thing. I know that Assemblyman Magnarelli is very closely involved, has been every year, and if you want to go down and honor your veterans, that's a great way to do it. Christmas Bureau sign up starts tomorrow, November 3rd, goes the 3rd, the 4th, the 7th, and the 8th. You can go on our website for the specifics, it will be held at St. March Church in Waldmanville. If you want your children to receive some stuff from the Christmas Bureau, you have to make sure you sign yourself up, and don't, usually they have a late registration date, but they don't always have one, so if you don't get in on these dates, you may get left out, and that wouldn't be very fun for Christmas. Don't forget, just early reminders, Turkey Trot, November 23rd, I believe that starts at 9:00. The Parade of Lights and the Tree Lighting, November 25th, I believe that starts at 5:30. And I would say for everybody out there who lives on this side of the river particularly, streets will get blocked off for both events, so don't be surprised on Thanksgiving morning if you try to go on Brayside Road, or if you try to go on Chaucer, some of those kinds of streets, Artillery, there may be people running, and you may not be allowed to drive on those streets. So, I have received phone calls from people, I needed to do Thanksgiving shopping at 9:15, and I could not get out of my driveway because they wouldn't let me out. They said, how long have you lived here? This has been going on for 40 years, this isn't the first year that's been blocked off. The same thing with the, the tree lighting, which starts at the Stewart's Plaza, behind Stewart's, and it runs up to Artillery, and down Artillery, up Omnida, to Oswego, down Oswego through the Four Corners, all those side streets will get blocked off. So if you live in that area, if you're going to order pizza for dinner, you might want to wait till like 8:00 that night, or have it the night before. The streets will get blocked off, and it's the only way we can do those things.
Or order from the pizza shop on your side of town.
Because I, I do remember one time...
There's enough!
We were at the pizza shops on this side, had somebody park on the other side of the river and run with bags, you know, the bags with the pizza in them, so they could get to people on that side of the river, and I know Pizza Man just says, no delivery from like 5:30 to 8:00, we're not going to even try.
We have enough pizza shops scattered...
Yeah, there's enough.
But you could probably find one that wouldn't be impacted.
And then another interesting event, O Shokalot, which has been a regular event, you go, similar to the, the one you guys have in the, in the Hard Rita Fest, and you go from the different businesses, and they have chocolate, and they also have specials, if they're a sales place, they have things on special, and if you want, there is a Facebook page called O Shokalot, and I know Hard Home and Community has information on it, too. It's kind of a nice little event, and then I got a...
Jeopardy for that?
That is, I didn't give you the date, that's November 9th, which is the week from tonight, from 3:00 to 9:00, so, the weather's supposed to be fairly nice next week, won't be frigid. Then I got a nice letter from, I believe it's Palmer Elementary, from first grade teachers Nicole Vaughn and Mary Widrick, they've been teaching rules and laws, and along with teaching them the three levels of government, federal, state, and local. And each student was to come up with a plan for a rule or a law that they follow, and explain why they follow that rule, and where it would benefit them and others if they did. So, I got four, and they're quite interesting. Chief Lefencheck would be happy to hear that Elliot said he would drive the speed limit, because you, otherwise you might get in a crash, and he did a nice drawing of, looks like a tow truck, and a speed limit of 55 is obviously not in the village. So that's from Elliot. We have, this is Killian, and he's going to do my chores because it would keep the house clean, and there's Killian doing his chores around the house. I can't wait till which chores he's doing, but he's doing hard. He's like a blue flash. Then we have, oh, she's happy to hear some of these guys. This is Landon, he's going to drive the speed, and say limit, going to drive the speed, because he could get very hurt if you don't. And this is his drawing of doing the speed limit. And there, the speed limit is LS.
Low speed.
Low speed, there you go. I know there's a reason, right, you were up there. And our last one is from Wayne, and he would clean up my garbage, because it can pollute the earth. So there's a drawing of Wayne cleaning up garbage, and he even has an arrow pointing that says "me," in case you couldn't tell that that was Wayne. So this is very nice to know that the first grade teachers are trying to teach kids about following rules and being good citizens, and I will send a letter to the teachers and ask those four students to get some recognition for having done a nice job. And I'll, hold on, I got something else to say, but I'll wait a little bit later. We'll move on to department heads, we'll start with our attorney, Bob.
I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay. Village Clerk, Jody?
I just wanted to remind residents that Village Water Bills are due by November 25th. If we do not get them in by November 25th, they will be levied to the March taxes, so just wanted to remind everyone to get those in.
That's the one I just got mailed today?
Yes.
Okay.
And I noticed that you had a list for the turkey box, too?
Yes.
And it looked like every slot was full.
Every slot's full for our turkey.
Very proud of our staff, we'll take care of one family, right?
Yes.
Great. That's, it was nice when I looked the other night and saw that, and I said, in case there was something open I would add, yeah, we would do it, just another one. Everyone was full. Mark Baker buying turkey? He could give me one, too. All right, you're up, treasurer's up.
It's a need-based program.
I'm needy. You have anything for us, Mark?
Yeah, a couple things. On the agenda, a little bit down here is the budget work session date that I'd like you to consider, and just, I, I want you to know, it doesn't matter to me, as long as it's that first week in December. And the things to think about, though, are on the night of a board meeting, or not on the night of a board meeting, and what the duration would be, we've done two or three hours before, and if it's on the night of a board meeting, do you want it before or after the meeting? And I'll let you discuss that during that agenda item, and maybe the department heads will have, have feedback about that, too, but, again, that's, that's kind of your call or your discretion. Second thing is that the cyber thing that I weighed in on with the insurance company last meeting has kind of grown into, I had an hour-long conversation with the insurance company yesterday, and we've got four or five things that we probably should do, so that we can get underwritten by the end of November for cyber crime insurance. They're not big things, and a couple of them are just demonstrating that we're on the road to doing those things. There are things like policy about different cyber things, and about cyber security within the village offices. Let me look at my notes here.
Is that something that John Hurt can take care of most of what we need?
I think he can do some of it, I don't think he's going to do policy for us. It's things like secure email, having the option of secure email, which I don't think we have right now. We're not going to do that before the new budget goes in, because there's a cost to that for us, but it's included with some of the other type things that, that we'd like to do for the spring. And next year, the more robust licensing of office and things like that have what we need built into it, so. It's employee training, that's probably the biggest thing, and they, Nimer has a free webinar-based program that they do, and they provide it to us, it's just that we need to have the employees who would be subject to a cyber crime, so Chuck, you'll be happy to hear that we're not going to call the guys up who are out mowing the lawns in the parks and have them do cyber training.
I'm sure, I'm sure a water guy is allowed to do it.
Yeah, I mean, but the office, the office staff, people who could get fished in an email, things like that, we'll just do a short webinar, and, and we, we take attendance in it, and then make sure that we can prove to the insurance company that, that people were trained. So it's things like that, there's a lot of things that we have in place that they were looking for, so that was good. Overall, she's very happy with what we have going on here, and how far along we are relative to, to other municipalities our size. She said it's a huge challenge with small villages that, that just don't have the resources in a lot of cases. So more to come on that. And I'm going to give you an update quickly on replacing the internet-facing credit card system. We've gone pretty far down the road with looking at that system, and it's very nice, and I think we're at a point where it would be important for you to see it, and, and see what this product looks like in the form of a demo. It's greatly enhanced functionality for all the people paying water and sewer online, and it's something that, where I think we can drive adoption and take the physical manual payment process out of the village clerk's office, either, either them coming in in person or coming in by mail. More efficient processing of payments and more automation, that people can send it and forget it, that their water bill can just be on an auto-pay system, like your National Grid bill, your Verizon bill, time... Grid bill, your Verizon bill, Time Warner, whatever. But I'd like you to see it. There is what I consider a slight increase in cost. The village would incur some costs on an annual basis, which the water and sewer funds are quite well-funded right now. So I think it's almost immaterial, but it is a cost increase. So, but it, I think we either are ready to show it to you if you're interested in seeing it, I kind of would like you to, because I don't want that to be like something we just go, hey, yeah. I don't know how the last system got rolled out. So if you were part of that process or if the staff just did it and if you care.
Yeah, I think most of it was done in the clerk's office.
Yeah.
I remember a discussion about it, I don't, and how it would work, I can't remember if we saw it done or not, but I'd be willing to.
Yeah. Let me see if I can set up some kind of demo, but I think you'll be pleased with it. And it's, you know, they're a partner company with our water and sewer billing system. And so it's, I think it's a big improvement.
Could this eliminate anybody being able to pay in person or mail it in? I mean, there are some people in our community who.
Oh, no, they still.
Are good at that.
Yeah.
Using that kind of, I mean, I hear it all the time, particularly older people go, am I gonna send something in automatically through, I don't even have a computer?
Yeah. It, no, we'd still be able to do that. And it's not like we would want to eliminate that for people who like to do that. But the adoption rate as a percentage of our overall water and sewer users is pretty low. And I think we just need to do better. It's a kind of a clunky system that we have now. It was a quick and dirty to be able to get that functionality up and running, so it met the need at the time. But now I think we have to move beyond that and, you know, provide something that's a little more with today's technology that's out there.
Sounds good.
That's it.
Very good, Mark. Thank you. Nice to have a treasurer who's technologically advanced.
That was my life before I was here.
Yeah.
My career, I should say.
Yeah. We'll move on to the senior center of the group.
Just a couple of things, I want to let folks know the Canton Woods Craft Sale is coming up in November on Friday the 17th and Saturday the 18th from 10 to 3. Public's welcome, so come on in and do some shopping at that. And also the wreath sale is happening again this year. We've been doing this for several years and the community response is very positive. It comes from a local north country florist and it does benefit the senior center. So if you need a live wreath for your holiday celebration, give us a call. The deadline for that is November 18th, so just wanna let folks know that. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Thanks, Ruth.
Yep.
Move on to our superintendent of public works, Chuck.
We're right in the middle of brush season now, leaf pickup. This was the biggest week. The next couple of weeks will be huge too, as the leaves are finally starting to come down. If everybody can just give the guys a little room, a lot of the leaves are taking up most of the room on both sides and they do the best they can to get down through there. It's just these two, these two weeks, they're in the road, they're in your way, but they get through pretty quickly if we can just kind of give them a break as they come through. We're in the winter season now, all parks, all parks are closed as of today, all bathrooms are closed. So people still use the parks, but they can't use the bathrooms anymore because if there's heat in them, then they'll freeze. Been working with Lieutenant Lockwood on the two events, the turkey trot and the Christmas parade thing, the both towns, Lysander, Van Buren have said they'll both send two plow trucks apiece to give us a hand. This has gotten so big, we have most all our trucks out, but it just wasn't enough. And in the past two years, they've given us trucks and they've agreed already to give us some this year, so that should make it a little better. Other than that, unless there's questions, we're all set.
When's the tree coming down?
Tree is going to be here a week from Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. We gotta just see what day they're creating to make it. It's coming from Church Road, but next, a week from Monday, it could be here. See what his availability is, we've talked to the people. Run it up and grab it and get it down and get it placed. Mike's gonna give us a hand, the police are gonna give us a hand getting down in the village with it. And so hopefully next week that'll be out. We're starting on the Christmas decorations too. That's Jeffrey's right on that, Jeffrey Boardwell does most all of that. We're starting this early because you gotta check all the lights, make sure they work. We've been talking to Niguel, we've got a couple of holes to get all working, so.
Very good. Thanks, Chuck. Move on to the police department chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. I'm gonna beat the drum on a topic that I've talked about ad nauseam over the years, and that is if we can get our residents to lock their car doors and then not leave their keys in their car, that would be very helpful to us and would helpful to them as well in not having their vehicles stolen. You mentioned last meeting, we had a situation where some vehicles were stolen and unfortunately one of them, I think, is still not recovered. One of them was recovered in New Jersey after a chase with the New Jersey police down there. So it's problematic, obviously. If the keys are left in and the vehicle's unlocked, that's exactly what people are looking for. So just please keep that in mind. Secondly, if everyone could be aware that as we woke up this week, a little bit of snow on the ground, Chuck's crew is gonna be out plowing, which means our folks in the police department are gonna be enforcing the village's overnight parking ban that starts November 15th. And we would ask people not to park on the street. Allows Chuck and his crew to be able to get the streets cleared for us, as I mentioned last meeting. And then I did some media interviews today with local media outlets. We had a couple instances of students, one had their social media account hacked and then the people demanded some financial resources from them to get the account back. Fortunately, they were able to contact the social media company, along with some contacts of theirs to let them know what had happened. And the original account was somehow deleted and then the student was able to get their new account. Second student was involved in a conversation, social media with someone that they did not know, some explicit photographs were sent. And obviously then a demand was made for money to prevent those social media contacts for that picture to get sent to them, to prevent that. So that student came to school the following day, told a school counselor that they trusted, who in turn notified our SRO. We had the FBI in earlier this year, an agent talking to some of the health classes about online safety to the kids. We put some resources together for both families so that they were aware of what was going on. The second incident, the particular student lives outside the village, so any criminal investigation will be handled by the sheriffs or state police. But if there's parents listening to this, just please talk to your children about what they're doing online on their phones. You know, technology is something that they grow up with, it's part of their lives. And you just don't know who's on the other end, and oftentimes it's someone with bad intentions. And we wouldn't want anything to happen to our students here. I appreciate both of their bravery in coming forward and reporting this and letting the authorities know that this happened to them and that we could get them hopefully some resources to, A, prevent it from happening again, and then B, educate the public that this is out there and it can happen anywhere, including in ball. So, other than Dana Lester's questions, Mayor, I have no other comments.
Good. Very good, Michael, thank you. Nothing on the pending business, move on to new business. Can I get a motion to turn over the list of the 2023 unpaid water sewer bills for the town of Lysander District to the amount of $9,465.04 to the town of Lysander for collection? Questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item B, motion to turn over the list of the 2023 unpaid water sewer bills for the Maple Road Water District to the amount of $3,717.49 to the town of Van Buren for collection?
Moved.
Saugus.
Discussion.
Okay.
Jody, I'm curious, does this include penalties for not paying as time? Okay, maybe we should double those penalties.
I'll make that move on. All right, so we have a motion in the second, any discussion besides Bruce? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item C is, our treasurer has requested a motion to say budget work session to discuss the March 1st, 2024 through February 28th, 2025 village budget. At this point, you folks can decide whether you want to do something. In the past, we have done like come in at 5:30, order pizza, work till 7:30 board meeting. When the meeting's over, reconvene for the budget session for as long as you think is necessary. Sometimes that first day is, you get an awful lot done. There have been times when people would say, well, let's just do a separate night, get together from 6 to 9 one night without the pressure of a board meeting. So this is a chance for you all to moist your opinions. You pretty much have to have the budget set by like about January 10th, right? About it? So you have to have it done basically by Christmas. Because once you get into the Christmas holidays and New Years and stuff, you don't have, nobody's gonna want to take time out to meet and talk about budgets during most times. So the more you can get done in the beginning.
We're talking, you were talking the first week of December or within the first two weeks? The first, you know, I should have looked at the schedule from last year. Yeah, so we did the 6th of December last year, which was the first meeting in December?
No, it was a Tuesday.
Oh, never mind, it was a Tuesday. So we did not opt for a board meeting night.
I don't agree.
And there's, you know, then you don't have the board meeting hanging over your head, then you gotta do whatever, but the other side of it is then you're out two nights versus one night that week or whatever.
And the other positive amount of that is you've got the board night, you could fall back on if there's stuff.
That's right, that's a good line.
Last year, I think part of the thinking too was it was your first year going through the process.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was.
How, I mean, what's your comfort level with, do you have a preference between doing it on a separate night versus doing it pre-board meeting?
I really don't. It's nice to not do it on a board night, but I'm also, you know, I don't.
It's a board night, a long night if we're. And the DPW team loses their meeting if we do it on a board night as well.
If you did it like say Tuesday, and then you said, well, we still have some work to do, you want to meet after the board meeting for an hour and try to nail a couple of these things down? Then you get down to where maybe you just got two or three things that get done before Christmas.
What are the dates that you would have preliminary budgets delivered to you so you can comply on them?
I think I asked for the preliminary budget by the end of November or December 1st or something, so then there's like a weekend in there and not just over the weekend.
Should have time to put it all together.
Yeah. And then like even on the schedule then, on Monday, if I had any questions, I could get all the questions worked out. And frankly, for the budget, for the first budget work session, it doesn't have to be perfect. It just needs to be workable and the department has to be around, so.
But it's nice to know for a couple hundred thousand off or a meeting off.
Yeah.
You guys want to try this?
No, sorry. In my first budget, we got done the first night and we were only above $300,000 difference between rent revenue and expenses. That was a lot of fun for a new mayor to sit there and figure out. We did. It was a fifth work for. Yeah, because they. Tuesday the 5th?
Yeah, Tuesday the 5th.
December?
Yeah.
I think last time you said Mike anyway.
What time?
Oh, we haven't gotten that by yet.
One thing at a time.
6:30 work for everybody or?
Yeah.
I mean, you can do it if you order a couple pizzas for, Pizza Man, eat your dinner or order your pizza.
He won't be here.
Chuck and I aren't of the belief that there was no pizza last year.
I don't think there was last year.
Make sure the doctor reflects.
That's why I'm bringing it up. First year I didn't know this. Is he gonna come with big sheet, those big sheet pizzas?
Mo probably had it.
Yeah, Mo used to take care of it, and Jody would probably, she knew.
We just wanted to get it done.
That work for you, Mike?
Yeah.
Mike Shepard, you're the guy often driving 80 miles an hour.
I'll make it work.
So it was 6:30 on Tuesday night.
Is there any issue game that night?
I don't know, I don't have them on, I don't have season tickets anymore, so.
There's no concerts that night that I'm aware of.
Everybody has their crossbow. You want to make a motion, you want to wait until the next meeting to finalize?
I think we could set it, that way everybody can plan on it.
Why don't you make a motion?
We need a motion? There's a motion or a.
Yeah, because it has to be open to the public, right?
What day, the 5th?
I'm gonna reset the project work session. Let's put out a big screen. For December 5th at 6:30. Any more discussion? I better put it on my camera. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So you're all set for budget discussion? 6:30 PM. Okay, any more discussion on that? I'll move on to item D. Can I get a motion to accept the resignation of member Mark Jenkins, effective November 8th, 2023, from the Architectural Review Board and the Planning Board?
Moved.
Discussion? It's on both? Architectural Review Board, I think, has somebody from zoning and somebody from planning and.
So are we currently looking to fill vacancies then? There was someone who reached out through the Facebook page.
Yeah, I got, saw today somebody had, I didn't recognize the name, but I'll make contact.
From the time I was with the planning board, he's Mark Jenkins, he was good to work with.
Yeah.
He's a sharp guy.
Yeah, he was a very nice, very nice person. Okay, we have a motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. This one will be a little tougher to read.
I will.
Would you read it? 20, thank you.
To accept the resignation with regret of Mayor Richard Clark, effective November 30th, 2023, as mayor from the village of Allosville.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Mike. Item F. Can I get a motion to designate the following office vacant at the end of the current official year to be filled at the village elections to be held Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, for the following term? The mayoral position for a term of two years?
Moved.
That would be added to the ballot that will have three trustees on it also. All right, we have a motion in the second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item G, can I get a motion to allow 20 additional hours of work for Louise Corrigan to work with a new DPW clerk at her current hourly rate?
$20.42.
$20.42.
Moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Specifically work on the budget.
Yes. Yes.
Was that what the?
This is the, that's what it's for. The new person hasn't been through the budget.
Oh, that's true. That'd be a tough one to have to do without anybody helping. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item H.
Want me to make a motion?
Yeah, would you please read that motion?
Yep. To accept the access easement future section as shown on Folks' Island section, number one dated 7/1/2023, modified on 10/20/23 pending engineer and attorney approval.
Any discussion?
Yeah. What you read says about 7/1/23?
July 1st, 2023.
What happened then?
That was the original date of the plan.
I thought it was for 2015.
Not the survey plan.
Survey plan were going on.
It may have been a different one, but the one that, the one that we're reviewing is the one that was July 1st, 2023, last revised 10/20/23.
Okay. I like at least when you look at a map, there's something on it. James Trasher looks at, there are blank pages, he goes, flip them, and right here, I'm looking at some blank pages about half the time. Alright, so we have, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item I, can we get a motion to appoint temporary work person for Canton Woods, starting November 6th, it will be Pat Lamran at $20 an hour. Right? Got that all right? Do you want me to explain here?
Moved.
Second for discussion, you're in, Jeff.
Okay, what happened is, it's over at the senior center and they're part-time individual but hurt, and he's not there, and he's not there anymore, and the reason that I'm advocating for it is because we don't have the people to go over and help Ruth. And I mean, just all the cleaning, does the snow removal and what have you. We, this week, our summer person is done. And he's willing to go over there for three hours a day and, and take care of the cleaning. They're currently, the cleaning service is over there two days a week, and I have to send somebody down two days a week to run the floor. I don't have to, but to run the floor machine. Ruth won't get on the floor machines. Rick, Rick Lamran, his work for us a couple of years up there, he's just fantastic. I ran over there today and met with Ruth, and I think they're gonna, it's gonna work out really well. She'll be really happy with him, but we just don't have the personnel, especially when it's snowing, when they're, when they wanna open up, we're in the trucks. So that's why we asked to, and, and they have his salary out there, which is a little lower, but there is some money there now. And hopefully we can just get him on board and that'll take care of, they have to set tables up for them and do different things like that.
Is it Rick or Pat?
It's Pat. He goes by Rick, I'm sorry. It's Rick, it's Patrick, yeah.
Okay. I thought I heard Pat and you just said Rick, and I thought, okay, make sure we get the right person.
Yeah, he's a current employee today. Today was his last, last day, but I think he'd be fantastic over there. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Before we go to pay bills, I would like to take a couple minutes to reflect on the fact that I'm stepping down from this position on November 30th. Because if I wait, I probably will fall apart. It's easier to do it now when it isn't quite as imminent. This was a very tough decision. This is something I love. Being mayor, I love working with this group. Take a look at this board. We got our two young guys who came in and just, done just a terrific job. I'm so proud of you guys. Ruthie, who has found her niche, is she's our senior center and our parade person, and she does a great job with that. And Shep, who's become our lead negotiator with the, with the police department and Shep, a little known story, but Shep and I have a, a real bond from when we were younger. And he was, we guarded each other when we played pickup basketball because we were the only ones that the other one could guard.
And he's 20 years older than.
Yeah, I was 20 years older than him. Shep always go, I can have Harkey, I can stay with him. So we go way back. It was fitting tonight that I couldn't think of something that Megan filled it in because for most of 10 years she sat next to me, and when I get stumped on a word, she whispered, give me the, she knew the word I was trying to think of and, and I've watched Meg really grow on the job, and she's a real, real asset to this board and to this village and I really enjoy being associated with you. Thank you. And this guy, I would be lost without him, and I know when Joe was done, Joe Saracini talked about all the times that he called Bruce for advice. Chuck, when I called Bruce for advice, we talked for about four minutes about the village and then 44 minutes about issue basketball. It teary-rates quickly. But I've always felt that I could call Bruce and I would get an honest opinion. He wouldn't always agree with me. Sometimes he didn't agree, we talked, and then he sort of agreed. We would kinda get on a common plane. But you know, everybody in, in life has to have that person that you can kinda be held accountable with and I've always felt that, again, Bruce and I played basketball together as high school kids in Saturday morning basketball. We go, I mean, now you're talking now 60 some odd years ago. I can still remember that, which is pretty good.
It's just 60 years.
And I've always been very proud of the fact that, I don't wanna single Erica, but everybody else here went to Ballensville. Went to, went to the school district. And their hearts and their souls are in the village, and I think Erica's that way now with his family. But it, but it's important that people that are involved have roots here. And they, they make decisions for the village based on passion from where they live. And this group, I think, is, is perfect at that. We've, it's a really great group. I look at Bob Baldwin and I've, I've never once asked Bob for advice that he hasn't had an answer. Maybe he might say, I gotta call you back in a little while, but, but I'll get to that answer. We started out, Ron Carr was the attorney when I took over, I think for like one week, I think, and then Dave Jones, who was his apprentice, took over, and then Dave had to leave, but he said, here's my recommendation. You know, Baldwin and Sutton. And it was one of the great recommendations since I've been a mayor. They've never let me down. Jamie's been great with our other boards. And, and they, they've acted like they grew up in Ballensville when they're around us, that they're a part of us, so. But just, you don't know the times when I've asked you something and you've had an answer that has taken a lot of pressure off of me because I got the answer from the right guy. Part of being able to do this job is having great village clerks. I mean, when I first was on the board, Rosemary was just retiring. Had that troublemaker back there, Mo, who was like a, like a, having your mother work with you and just point out, do you wanna wear that shirt? That shirt looks a little. But you know, I, you just could, you would forget things and I'd walk in and there'd be something on my desk going, oh, God, I forgot about that. Thank God Mo remembered that. And Jody has stepped in and done a lot of the same things. She's really done a great job. She's different, but, but similar, and she's covered my tracks a couple of times when I forgot something, and she's been right there to remind me. But you, you really do count on your clerk. I don't think outside people will understand that relationship, but boy, when it comes to the elections and, and some of the things that have to be filed by a certain time, the insurance comes in and you say, I don't remember what we did last time you turned your clerk, and they go, I got it right here, don't worry, I already had pulled it out. We're one step ahead of you. We, we have, we have a treasurer now who's the music expert of the world, but he's also a Hall of Treasurer and a great computer-type guy who's, has solved a lot of our problems, and we had, we had Anna for a long time. Anna was terrific. She didn't have the background that Mark had in, in the, that kind of work, but she fought hard to try to do it as best as she could, and she really, I mean, she was the one that came in and said, you guys keep talking about this account, there is no account like that in there. I can't find it. And she was right, there wasn't one. You know, and then she'd get flustered and go home and make me a cake. She's the best cake maker around. And then I look across at, at Ruth and one of the first things, when I was a trustee, one of the very first things we did was appoint Ruth to be the director of Canton Woods, and it was probably the best thing we've ever done. We have the best senior center in New York State, and there's a reason. Sitting right in that chair. And we've been a good team, we've worked together and that senior center's just got a special place in my heart. A lot of great people. And you've done a terrific job. You make my job easy. I don't have to worry about the senior center. So. And Chuck, I get that phone call, probably four out of five days a week I get a call from Chuck. Mr. Mayor! Usually I don't get the first call, cuz I don't have my cell phone on me. And I say, oh geez, Chuck called, like, well, what are you doing? Still sleeping? And, but it's so nice to know here's Chuck is worried about what our village looks like and you think, you know, I, I always think I have that passion, I'm, I want the village to be beautiful, I want it to be clean, and Chuck's got that even one step more. You know, we have a concert at the island, maybe a little controversial band or something. Might, I might stop over to see if everything is going okay, and there's Chuck, because he walked up just to make sure everything was okay. Make sure there didn't have any electrical problems. I mean, there's a guy who did not grow up in Ballensville, but you would never know it with his passion for this village, so. I can never thank you enough, Chuck.
What's the only for the pizza?
Hmm? I've been together a while, we've gone to a lot of dinners, and I swear you in when you became president of the state, I believe it was the state association, and always know that I get a straight answer from you, and I think because of you and, and the lieutenant and the people from before you, you know, filled your shoes, Dan Warner, John Balone. This village is a safe place to live and it's not an accident. It's because we have good police who understand what kind of village we have. And they, they they do their work based on that, and I would say as I move on and move out and new people, obviously somebody new is going to be on the board, whether it's, as mayor, whether it's a trustee, if somebody on the board, current board becomes the mayor, however that works, I would just ask that you please, please consider the fact to keep the political parties out of the village. We've, we've done it for a long time. It used to be Republicans and Democrats, and that was, I don't know if it was when you were on the board, but there were some nasty times. I mean, people who knew each other or neighbors who would come in here and fight with each other, and it got pretty ugly because I'm a Democrat and you're a Republican, we can't possibly agree. And I have told people that looking at this board, I do not know, I couldn't begin to guess how any of you vote. And that's great. I don't know if you're a Republican, if you're a Democrat, if you're way Republican or way Democrat or in the middle. And I can't think of a better scenario for a village board, because there's, we don't, there, there's nothing political about this kind of a board. It's worrying about the life of the people who live here. That they, they, I live in Ballensville, I'm damn proud of it. They're a great place. They have parades, they, they honor their, their veterans, they have Christmas stuff, they have flowers all over the streets, it's beautiful. They have great parks, we have trails, we have sidewalks everywhere. The police department is, is on top of everything, is very, I am afraid to say, there's very little crime. Just about the time I say that, I'll jinx somebody. But I think it's because there's police cars on the street, they're active, they recognize problem areas, they recognize problem people, they see the wrong person in the wrong place, there's better stop and check this guy and they stop a problem before it happens. So if you remember the last election we had, the failed coup where the, one of the parties decided they wanted to take over the village government and had a write-in campaign and it didn't work, thank God. And it was only because they had bigger dreams of taking over the town and then taking over the county. Let's don't be that stepping stone for them. Stand firm when it's time for elections and voting. I would be there to help all of you get re-elected. I mean, if you, you need letters written, signs put out in my yard, I'm there for all of you guys, you're the best. And I thank my family, my crazy sister, the cat lady, my other sister Wendy, her husband Andy Dragan was on the board, he was one of the guys that kind of inspired me to think about being on the board. He was a trustee, he was a mayor. Joe Saracini got me, encouraged me to run for trustee, and then announced one day, well, you'll probably be the next mayor, you're ready, right? You know, I wasn't, I didn't realize he wasn't gonna run, I wasn't prepared to run. And thanks to Mo and other people, you know, Bruce and Megan sitting next to me, we got through it. It's been a, a work, a labor of love. I'm gonna miss it. I hope you people don't forget me, that you call me up and say, remember that time we were talking about doing this or doing that? Love to hear from you, and I'll be around, you probably think I'm a pain in the rear. But it's, it is time physically, and I just need a break. I, I don't like to keep saying it, but I'll be 77 in January. A lot of miles on these feet. I got two artificial hips 20 years ago. The arthritis was bad then, now it's building up in other parts. I got a lot of issue basketball to watch this winter, and that'll keep me busy. I'll be calling Bruce to ask him what he thought of the game, we'll chat, and say, I thought he should've played this guy more.
I'll get some message while I'm trying to watch it.
And I hope I didn't go on too long. There's people that were on the board before. Rick Trusty was just, just a gem to work with. I mean, not a Beeville guy, but he, what he sure put his heart and soul in the Ballensville. And, and Mark Wilder, who was a Beeville guy, who had some real specialties and and all he ever said was, we owe it to the taxpayers to take care of their money. Spend it the right way and spend it the best way we can spend it, and he would just harp on that. So you know, doesn't get, things like this village don't happen by accident. Good people like you folks on the board help make it, all these people on these side tables, the people who come in and talk to us and tell us what they're not happy about, generally we can get, we try to fix it. I'm, I'm sorry that we didn't do a better job on Lock Street, but we will, I will remind people in the spring that you were in here and that we promised you we would take good care of it. Don't have much else to say. Jody was really nice to me and bought me a cake, which I'd like to share with everybody, so if you wanna stick around and have a piece of cake as soon as the meeting's over. I love you all. I love the village. And I hope I have a lot of time to watch the work you all do. And I will be there to clap for you, support you.
Okay, we want to just say, keep working to get to that open corner jumper.
I just can't get to the corner anymore. My feet don't move fast enough.
And I'll be covering it.
If you cover him after he has it replaced?
No, no, no. This was back when Chuck was the PA announcer for my championship JV basketball team, 16 and 1.
1987.
88, 89, I think it was. And then that was one of the highlights of my coaching career. We had a great team.
That was 88, 89, you're right.
That was a fun group. So you know, it's, I'm a Beeville guy. My parents were from Ballensville. There's everything about Ballensville that's in me. I love it. I'm not going anywhere. Most of you know where I live. Feel free, when it's nice out, stop up, we can visit. Hopefully I'll be walking a lot, trying to get myself in better shape, and it's been a good ride. It's a lot of fun. So that's all I have to say about that. Does that sound like somebody kidnapped?
Porch gum.
Porch gum, that's about all I have to say about that. Porch gum, that's all I have to say about that.
Maybe you can do bills and stuff if you're gonna adjourn.
Yeah, I just wanted to move on to item nine, can I get a motion to pay bills, is All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried?
Eight forty.
Eight forty? Can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting at eight forty? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, everybody, and, you know, that was backwards.